Shoot, alright, can you get, start that again? We were, we were, we weren't mic'd up at that point.
Okay, so it's just minutes for approval for the March 12th, 2024 meeting? Have a motion?
Just do it again. Yeah, I, I say we accept the minutes.
A second?
Okay, all in favor on the table?
Aye.
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 Go.
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Next is old business of which there's none. And now new business is a cease and correct order. Order to show cause in the wetlands violations. Property owner Paul Church Jr. Location 494 Newfield Road and 446 Newfield Road. Assessor map 233 block 003 lot 004 and map 233 block 003 block 005.
Alright, I'm gonna share the, the notice and kind of go over what the enforcement was and leave it up to you to talk to Mr. Church is here right now, so.
He'll just give us a brief.
Uh, try, yeah, try angling your mics a little bit.
Hear me now? Oh.
You wanna come up closer?
Okay, he's just gonna give us a brief uh, description of what's going on. And then we'll talk to you and see what's going on.
But I'll give you a quick rundown, but we're not gonna be able to talk too much about it tonight. Just I filed an intent for a charge against the comment warrant to tell you.
No, well, no, cuz he hasn't, he hasn't told us anything about.
Waiting for our.
Waiting for him to tell us what's going on.
We need our report.
Yes. Why don't you just let us get our report and then you could tell us your side of it?
Yeah, okay, so, so this is a cease and correct order issued April 1st. I displayed it on, on the computer, so this came about, as Mr. Church is alluding to. We have a zoning court pending action that I won't get into. It's not fully relevant to this case. But during a visit to assess compliance, a police officer that was on duty, Sergeant Baldus, pointed out a large manure dump at the edge of the property. Upon further investigation, it was off the property and within a mapped wetland and tributary to the Nogatuck. So I'll put some, some of the pictures up here. So this is the location on the property. This is Newfield Road here. You can kind of see it from the, from Newfield Road and I'll share a picture after that. But you can see here, this is the area of mapped wetlands. It's a general map, it's state level mapping, but on further investigation, it was clearly a by intermittent tributary with associated fringe wetland. Here's a picture from the right away looking toward the property. And I don't know if you can see with the snow here, but you can kind of make out these trees here are the edge of the property line, excuse me. These trees are the edge of the property line here and they're posted, no trespassing. And we have kind of a large amount of manure that's been kind of built out into the wetland from repeated dumping over several years. So that is fill in a wetland without permit from the commission. And so issued a cease and desist or cease and correct order within the 10 days required by statute in our regulation. And that's where we're at today. So the notice itself that you're gonna be, you know, that your role is to either uphold, modify, or overturn is to have them discontinue the use of the site as a manure dump to remove manure stored within the wetland area and upland regulated area and submit an inland wetlands permanent application for the restoration of the site for those damages done to the wetland area.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Church, let me just get you a microphone.
Yeah, make sure you state your name for the record.
I can move it.
That's a little bit closer. Okay, um, first of all, um.
Just state your name.
I did put the town of Tornton in contempt of court.
Well, state your name and.
Oh, that's, that was my next thing. My name isn't Paul Church Jr., it's Paul Church Senior. So he sent a certified letter to the wrong person. That's the other reason why he has to refile paperwork to send it to me. Cuz I'm not junior, that's my son, I'm senior. Right address, wrong person. So my name is Paul Church Senior. I live at 446 Newfield Road. I did put the town of Tornton in contempt for two, well, more than, more than the reason, but the main reason is the visit that he came was totally unethical. It states there that he was only there to see the pigs, make sure that, cuz that's, we're supposed to get rid of pigs. We've gotten rid of pigs, but I'm not gonna get into a whole bunch of stuff cuz like I said, I have, I, I got contempt of court papers against him. But I will give you a quick rundown, so I'm not wasting your guys 100% time, but like, he's gotta resend me papers to come back. But I will be nice enough to give you a little bit of an explanation with some of what's going on. So the part of it is I'm the defendant. He didn't talk to me at all. She's not a defendant, he talked to her. They put me in contempt of court cuz of what she answered, not from what I said. I'm the defendant, you can't put me in contempt of court.
Over this yet.
Huh?
For us, now, this doesn't have to do with.
What do you mean, he put you into?
I can't hear you.
What do you mean, he put you into contempt of court?
They put me in contempt of court for not getting rid of all my pigs fast enough.
Well, we're not talking about your pigs right now, we're talking about just the pig manure in the wetlands. We're just wetlands, anything to do with wetlands, it's us. The pigs and zoning and everything else.
That's, but, but the paper he sent me wasn't to be looking at my property, he was only checking for pigs. That's what I'm trying to say, he was only looking for pigs.
Yeah, but if they did an overhead.
And then.
And you could be also caught.
Huh?
I mean, if an airplane came over and took a picture and it was filled, you would still be cited for it.
Okay, but the other thing is, um, that property was owned by a gentleman pretty much his entire life. That whole section from my house all the way down to almost the end of the street garnet. They used to have a farm. Okay? They had a barn in the backyard, they had cows and horses. That piece of property where you see where the stuff is, that's been being filled for 70 years. When we moved in, that piece of property, we didn't really get to see it until it was nice out cuz we moved in in the winter, was, the whole section was filled with wood, metal, crushed cans, animal bones. We cleaned up the majority of that. And we just, cuz he had a farm there and that's where he was putting all of his stuff. That's why we started putting stuff there cuz it was, that's where he is. We didn't go any farther, we didn't go any wider, we just went up with it a little bit. And I've been only there for five years, you can't tell me that whole pile was from me for five years. I only have a little over an acre piece of property. We, we don't put no metal, nothing, we found, like I said, we found bottle, plastic bottles, everything, we cleaned it up. We've been there six years and we're still finding metal all over that place, glass over the place.
So you cleaned it up and it is wetlands, that's wetlands according to the maps cuz they go by soil type.
Yep.
So you cleaned it up and then you put manure back in there?
We don't, we don't put manure in there. The only little bit of manure that goes in there is if it's on, if it's on my, on the, um, on the hay or a little bit in the mud. We don't take manure, piles and buckets of manure and put it over, that we don't do. But we do know that a little bit might get in there when it's in the shavings. Or I, I use the shavings as a term for hay and mud. But we put lime over it just in case it does. So, so it breaks it down in case there is a little bit, but we don't put directly put manure on there. I can't hear you. What do I put in there? Just my grass shavings, whatever I don't feed to the pigs. Any, any trees or limbs that come down. Hay, mud, wood shavings from around my, you know, that we put around the garden. Really, that's it, I put anything else?
That's illegal to do. You can't put things in the wetlands, wetlands are supposed to be left alone.
But we didn't know it was a wetland cuz he owned that property for over 70 years.
But still, you did dump and you, you put things in the wetlands and the things that are in the wetlands now need to be taken up.
Right, but I'm not responsible for somebody that put more than half of that pile there when I didn't, when he lived there his whole entire life and he had a farm. We found, we found animal bones and cow skulls in that pile.
Couldn't have been, couldn't have dumped in there either.
Well, I'm not gonna be, I'm not responsible for somebody that already put stuff there. Huh?
Baldus, you put hay and grass and stuff like that in there.
Right, but that's cuz he already had put it there for 70 years.
Okay, for you to do it because it's wetland.
But I'm not responsible for that. Cuz I'm only, I only know that this person, this person had a farm, cows and horses and that's where he was, he was dumping it. And then he broke up the property.
Somebody walked up there and he was doing it, he'd be doing the same thing you're doing. He'd be standing here just like you are because you can't put things in the wetlands. You can't put straw, you can't put hay, you can't put trees in the wetlands.
Yep.
Supposed to be left alone.
Well, again, the other thing is, um, I'm waiting till court to find out if it's being thrown out cuz the thing was violated, so no decision can be made till after court. Cuz if, if it gets kicked out.
No, it's, it's separate from wetlands, it's, it's a zoning, yeah, it's a zoning.
Court makes no difference to what's going on here.
Right, but if, 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 if that's thrown out, then that whole thing, visit is gone. It doesn't count.
That area, area, little views of filled area.
Yeah, this, this, this shot is from the street right away, which is public property.
But again, the owner of the property that had that property for over 70 years filled that up. I'm, I'm not responsible for that. No, I'm not.
If you put stuff in there, the stuff you put in there, you're responsible for.
I only, I only gotta go down a couple, a little bit cuz most of it was him, he, he was there for 70 years, I've only been there for, for six. Cuz again, he had a farm, we cleaned up, we've been cleaning up his mess for five years.
Whatever you put in there has to be cleaned up.
But we didn't know it was a wetland cuz he owned it all the way down to the end. That, how is it not fair? Cuz we don't, we don't go near, even near the water.
I have a few questions if it's okay. So obviously you're, this is like animal manure waste and hay and bedding and stuff like that. Uh, where, where is it being deposited now?
What?
Is it being, is there any being deposited anywhere else on your property now? Or did you change location since this noticed where you put things?
I put some in the back behind our property, yeah. I even told that to the health department, I put.
Scroll to the boundaries. So this property that is being, uh, stuff's being put on, it's not your property, correct?
I can't hear you.
Is this your property, do you own this lot, this adjacent lot right now or no?
What is it?
Do you own this adjacent lot or is it somebody else's?
Um, well, I don't know if she owns that or not.
But is it, is it yours, do you own that property where things are being dumped on?
I own some of it.
Okay, the property boundary lines, Nate, so.
Yeah, they're posted. Like you can see the line posted from the right away.
So does he own that pro- adjacent property or no?
No, the, the property owner was notified, um, when this, she was copied on this.
And this, and this line here isn't what we were told where it goes down. It's showing that it's, it's going over my dad's trailer and what we were told, it comes over. I don't know if you got a picture up there or not.
Yeah, we're looking at it right now.
Like this one?
Yeah.
Actually looked at this while I was driving here.
They have the main shadow up in the center?
Uh, this is hard to.
Over this way, right there.
This.
When we bought the property, we told, we were told that property went straight down. Coming down, so you are in where your arrow is.
Yeah.
Where we were told that property is.
That's what we were told by the, by the real estate agent and by the person who owned the house next to us who just. Did he sell it to his niece or cousin, whatever she was, huh? Sister. So he even told us that our property comes down on a different angle. This is showing it over, way over the, from what we were instructed, way over.
Yes, like, I guess whether or not it's your property is, is sort of irrelevant right now because if you're the person who did put anything in the wetlands, like we said, it doesn't matter what it is. It's against the regulation too. Now, it is your responsibility as a property owner to know where the property boundaries are exactly when you purchase the house and you sign your agreements and everything.
We did, we talked to the real estate agent, she's the one that told us.
Let's find, and you can verify that with the town records to look at the property lines and know where your property boundaries are and what you're responsible for being taxed on to. But anything within that wetlands area, nothing can be in there. And this is visible from the road. When I drove here, I was able to see kind of the, it kind of juts out from the road, you can see it visible. So whether or not Nate recognized it while he was on the property or not, it's kind of irrelevant cuz he was able to see it from the road as well. So I understand your frustration, I'm a farmer too. But when you, when you have something like this, you have two separate cases here. Your first case, no matter what happens with that, it doesn't change, it doesn't predicate this one being effectual or not. This is completely separate with the wetlands and I understand that the previous farmer was perhaps dumping there, but that doesn't justify you to dump anything there as well afterwards. So whatever you have placed there over the past five, five years, you're responsible for removing out of the wetlands and restoring it back to its natural wetland state.
I only, I only have to go down a little bit cuz I told, like I told you, he, he's been there for over 70. Him, his, he lived there basically since the time he was born until he died. Okay, so, um, but like I said, I'm not responsible for that whole thing, there's no way cuz I'm not, I'm not taking care of somebody else's stuff. Okay? If I knew that I wasn't allowed to go over where he was, I wouldn't, we wouldn't put it there. Okay? But that's where he was. And then who's gonna reimburse me for all the cleanup that I did over there for you guys? I mean, if I left all the metal there, you, you would, you would not believe. You know the green bins that we sell, um, we don't sell, the green bins we use for garbage pickup? In the six years that we've been there, between that pile, the backyard in the yard, piece of property next to us, 15 to 20 of those barrels, minimum, filled with that much garbage. This man has, the entire backyard was nothing but glass, metals and bones everywhere. We still clean it up, every day we still find glass, we still pick it up, we still throw it away. And if we walk the dogs and we find more metal in the other yard, it's not even ours, we pick it up cuz we know it came from him.
Yeah, when I, when I purchased my property, there was also a ton of cans and trash. And I did, it was actually in the wetlands, they had a fire pit back there and a bunch of trash and I removed all of that. But when you purchase a property, you, you become responsible for whatever you're purchasing. Like you inherit whatever problems a property has. Whether the foundation be messed up or, or whatever it is, you're taking that upon yourself. Now, I think it's been, that's great of you and I commend you for helping clean stuff up, but it's also not your property. So you, you doing it was just, that was nice of you to do, but there was no requirement for you to do it and it would have been on the previous owner or the current owner to get that maintained and cleaned. So that doesn't really have any relevance to, I mean, it's a good deed and I'm glad you did it. And thank you for doing that, honestly. But it, it's really on the previous or current landowner to do that, not you. And this is kind of the situations where, you know, you're, you do something good, right? And then it's like, you know.
Yeah, then I'm gonna get for being doing, somebody else was doing for 57, 50 to 70 years. I don't, I don't go to the road, we kept it in the exact same spot, we didn't extend nothing. It was that built up before I got there.
Yeah, so I, I drove, I live on Gerdat Road. So I drove in today and knowing the property and looking at the maps where I came here, when I was driving by, I took a look. And so for everybody else, it's, it's on an elevation, it's on the left side of the road as you're going towards town. And you can see how it, um, it like peers off, it's, 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 there's clearly many, many years. It's like somebody took a dump truck, like a dump truck or two to fill that area. You could see, it's like going up the base of a lot of trees too, so it is deep. And you know, I was thinking, my thought when I was driving by was how do they make so much manure? And it, the, the explanation is you haven't, it's been this many years. But you are partially responsible for some of the bedding and some of the hay and some of that other stuff. And my recommendation would be to figure out the cubic yards that you've produced each year. And then perhaps there's a, a way to restore it to the condition it was previously to you essentially going on the property.
Well, we, we were already, we already, after he gave it to us, we stopped. And we, we were gonna put grass over and just.
Yes, there's.
Cuz it's level with the property.
There's certain, it has to be certain wetland shrubs. So when other people have violations with wetlands, um, they do many different things, but when they go to restore it, usually they're not allowed to plant grass because that's not a natural restoration, that's like an extension of their lawn. So a lot of times they're trying to restore it to something that's more favorable to them, which would be a lawn.
We were just trying to make it look better, that's all, I know.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it has to be a, a particular wetlands mix, has to be certain brush, certain, um, you know, these different wetlands plants that are native to the area, that's how it gets restored by being brought back to that state.
There wasn't anything there, it was, it was just.
It would be, it would be the surrounding, I understand, but it would be, it would be the surrounding vegetation that's natural, that's basically what needs to be restored too.
So.
Question?
So if I, if I plant some trees in there, like a brush thing? And.
What? Get it down to level of the original soil, does it need to be planted or it just needs to be?
I mean, I don't have a per, that's, that's, you know, kind of for the commission to decide. I, I don't, you know, it gets clear that there's been some deposition of material there and there needs to be a permit sought for remediation of it. It's up to the commission what to, what level and, you know, I mean, best practice would be to have a professional do just what Stephen said and making it some kind of assessment as to how long, how many years. But you can waive that, you don't need to require a professional. You could have a site visit and kind of make your own sort of assessment of it that way.
I mean, I'd be willing to put, if you want to put a trees or something right there, I can do it for you.
How big is this area?
Cuz like I said, it's all natural stuff, I don't put any garbage, what's, it's all by, and I.
It doesn't matter whether it's natural or not because the, the wetlands basically needs to just be left alone in order to function properly. And whenever you are disturbing wetlands, even with things that are organic, it's not what would have been there naturally and it impedes the, the way that the wetlands work.
Okay, so.
Right, that's, that's basically all.
So to answer some of your question to that response, there is no interference with any water movement whatsoever, it's not even close to the water.
Wetlands are about soil types and how water moves through the soil underground. It's, there is also, yes, like alongside drainage and streams and ponds and that's also part of the wetlands. But what we are, what we are concerned about here is wetland soils and how water moves through the soils underground. You won't see the water, it's rising up and down underground. And that, that is determined by the type of soils that are there, people will go in, scientists will go in and do borings. Then these, this area was determined to be wetlands, so based on the soils. And it's not that it has to be wet, it's that the water table is rising and lowering up and down under the soil.
Oh, I know, the, the, I get, I get just water beyond belief on my property, I can't even, it's mud whole, all year round cuz I get it all from the top of the hill above me.
Yeah.
But, I mean, like I said, we stopped, we stopped putting anything there, we put, we put some shavings along so it looks good. Um, cuz we got natural shavings from a, a wood shipping company, fresh, fresh, not even like sitting around, he, same day he cut it. We put it, we put it over the top just to give it a look. We've, and if there was something you wanted us to put on there, I'd be more than willing to do it for you cuz.
The, the issue is, is not adding to, it's removal. And to answer your question earlier, it's probably, if I had a guess for the road, like a 20 foot wide by 40 foot long, maybe 10 to 15 foot deep area, uh, there's, there's a significant amount of material there, but I don't, like, I don't think you're responsible for all of it. You know, that's why I would be more comfortable with if there would be how many animals, how many years equaled how many, you know, cubic yards of manure being, manure, hay, shavings, bedding, whatever, and then that's the amount he's responsible for removing.
So the, that property is owned by someone else, yes?
Yep.
And would they be responsible for removing the rest? Would they then get a violation for the rest of the?
We could, if you want me to do that, I could, I could send them a notice after that. Yeah, that, that would be, that's up, that's totally up to you. The statute of limitations for wetlands is, well, there's not really a statute, but it's when the wetlands ordinance was enacted. And I'd have to look that up exactly, but it was sometime in the 70s. That would be, you know, the limit to which you can go back in time. As you know, we, we did that last case where there was an issue going back to the early 2000s and that was kind of, in, in my opinion, generally as far back as we usually go. Or that I've seen the commission go, but it's, our opinion is that you can go as far back as when the wetlands ordinance was adopted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would propose a, a site walk if you're open to it. You've, just a couple of us coming out there to look at it, to propose a plan with you to make a fair and equitable solution. It's not your property, but you are partially responsible for some of the issue that needs to be restored. With this one, it's like, it's a significant pile and there's like trees in it too. It's not like you can just go in there and scoop it out easy. Nope. Not, I mean, some, but.
So, well, I mean, when you pile stuff up along a barbed tree, it usually kills the trees, so.
I, I drove by quickly, but it's a, it's a big pile. And I was thinking to myself, like, how are you gonna get an excavator in there to like, move this out, like, it's not even.
Yeah, cuz like I said, he, he had a monster pile, it, it was all around everywhere over there.
It looks like an extension of the hill. It's that large. It's like somebody put an extension of the hill to make it more flat there. This is a, this is a weird case cuz it's not really your property, but you're responsible for dumping in the wetlands. It's called filling the wetlands when you add anything to it. And it, it was already previously filled and you're adding to the fill, so that's the, that's the main issue here.
I don't know how we're gonna decipher what he put in and what was already there without having somebody do.
That's what I was saying. That or some sort of study.
The other thing is maybe, maybe we have a history of aerial photos.
Right.
Yeah, I could go back, I could do a little bit of an analysis with that and put something together for the commission. We, I think our area, our high resolution aerials go back to 2018. So is that about when you purchased the property?
Um, yeah, something like that, 18, 19.
For that, uh, yeah, I believe, I believe, uh, Randy, are you on the call?
He's in the waiting room.
Oh, yeah, he is on the call.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I am, I was just on mute, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Just for the record, when did you come in?
Uh, seven oh six.
All right, so, for the record, Randy came in at seven oh six.
Yeah, I need some time to. I'm sorry, Randy, we didn't, we didn't catch that.
No, I didn't know if you had a question, I didn't know if you were calling me because you had a question while I was fighting to get off on, on mute.
No, I was just checking to see if you were there because I, I noticed, um, we're missing one, so.
Gotcha.
I, I would like to do a site walk.
Do we have, hello, uh, this is Joe. Uh, do we have any, uh, additional aerial views of the property owner who has ownership of this property, where the pile is, to see if there are any other piles on that property?
Um, so, we have this, this, this aerial view here, um, this is leaf off from this past, last spring, so spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, so, uh, you know, I'd have to take a closer look to see. I, you know, we don't, we can view what we can view from the right away, um, but aerial interpretation does have its limitations. I think knowing the location of this peninsula, um, would be helpful, you know, would help for us to figure that out. Um, but yeah, I, I'd probably want to take some time and put together like a chronology of aerial photographs for you, um, to make that assessment.
Yeah, I think it would be good because, uh, if there are other areas, uh, it'd be nice to address this all at one time, uh, and, uh, you know, find something else later.
There's nothing else in there.
Was there any evidence of any burial within that site?
Uh, from, from my perspective, I could only, I, I only, uh, showed the observation I made from the city right away, which was, was this, I didn't know anything else, but I wasn't, you know, looking terribly hard at other parts of the property.
Only the cow skulls and the cow bones that I were finding, that's, that I know that's in there, and I got most as, as much as I could out.
Now, have you, have you ever spoken with this property owner regarding its, uh, uh, ladder history? And the fact that you were going on to the property?
And the, and the, and the, the people that did own it, both of them are deceased. Their daughters took it over and then sold it as soon as they died.
Do the daughters still own it?
Huh?
Do their daughters still own it?
No, he, the, the gentleman that owned the property, he owned it all the way down to almost a garnet. So he originally owned all this property, including that. Okay, that's what I'm saying, is he originally owned all this, and then I don't know what year he decided to split it and sell it. I don't know if he sold it to a family member, but I just know that they sold it and split it and, and built the house on the next lot over. But originally, the original owner owned that entire area, that's what I'm saying, that's why.
I understand. Um, did, is this a separate building lot now? Is it a vacant building lot, Nate?
It's a vacant lot, yes.
Okay.
The, the adjacent property owner owns it. So I was able to pull up aerials starting in two thousand and twen- eighteen. Um, this is from an oblique view, so you can see kind of the side of the house, it's not overhead.
Yep.
So I can do a three hundred and sixty degree turn on this, this is the area kind of in question right here.
Okay.
And again, this was April of two thousand and eighteen, um, if we rotate around here, this, it's right in here. And so I can try to time step through this.
Yep.
The line is not going to be exact here because of, there's distortion.
Yep.
Yeah, see that line, that's, that line is more what I was told the property is at, that line there.
Yeah, that was just a distortion, it's, you really can't use those lines when you change the view.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that's, that's, I was telling you, that's how I was explained when I bought the property.
Got it. Um, okay, so this is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
There's, there's not much of a difference.
So it's hard, it's hard to tell from there. Let me try to spin this around. You can see some of the areas superficially, right, where there's bedding deposited there.
Yeah, so I mean, the bedding is lighter in color.
Right.
Yeah.
And that looks like that those are some fresher deposits in twenty twenty-two. Then it looks like that's what Mr. Church is describing, where it's kind of a mix of stone and, you know, fill and other material. Um, it goes back to, you know, the, the photos get worse, so it's harder to interpret what's going on there.
So at this point where we are at, at the moment, before a site walk, do we want to table this?
Well, if.
I mean, I'd be more than willing to get rid of some of it for you, I mean.
If the registered letter went to Paul Church Junior, you have to rectify that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we're really even talking on the record.
Okay, so we're basically waiting for this to show up in a subsequent month?
Right.
Okay.
Make it legal, I think that's what we should do. And then after that, then we schedule, I think if everybody's in agreement for a site walk.
So, you heard that we have, that basically this was just a discussion because with the letter was sent to your son instead of you, as you said, so you'll get the corrected letter, and then we will see you again a subsequent month, and hopefully we'll do a site walk and assess what, um, you know, what level of mitigation we, we request, and figure out if we can find a solution with you.
You want me to get rid of, I can start getting rid of some of it now if you want me to.
You, what?
I'm.
Uh, she wants to talk, just state your name for the record and come on up.
Come on up.
Say what you want to say. Okay, so just state your name.
I'm Audrey Curtis, live at the same address, four forty-six. So basically, we're going to just redo this all over again so that it's legal because of the junior and senior part. So in the meantime, because my intent definitely is not to harm the wetlands.
Yeah.
Can we start moving what has been put there that we do know is ours?
Is there any issue with that, Nate?
No.
Is that okay?
Yes, so you can.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's all I want to know.
Okay. Is there anything that you need me to add to it?
Nothing, we'll just move stuff for now because they're going to come up, they're going to wind up doing a boring to actually see how far.
I would just take pictures, just take pictures before of the different angles all over, and then take pictures after, maybe some videos too, that way you have proof of saying, hey, look, I did remove stuff, and this is how much.
Yeah.
And if you, and if you're removing it, like whatever method you're using, wheelbarrow, out of the truck, whatever, keep count of how much material you're moving. Well, I think that will play into it later.
Yeah, there's certainty that the new location where you would place it is not in a, a wetland.
We have a wetland's line?
To another farm.
So this was.
Okay.
This was never, this was never mapped, right, so, you know, this is usually, I mean, it's discretionary for you, I mean, it's usually the, um, the applicant that has to provide the wetlands mapping, um, in this case, per, my opinion, um, the wetland boundary is really obvious because it's this, even where the fill isn't deposited, it's steep, and then it gets flat where the little stream comes through there, and so it's kind of like at the bottom of that is where the greater the wetland is. Um, so I don't think we need to have them, in my opinion, do a survey, um, but, but my only other recommendation would be, you might want to, there's going to be nothing preventing you scheduling a site visit sooner rather than later, um, just because the leaves are still off the trees, and it, you know, you could get an idea of what's on the ground prior to the next meeting so that you could rule, and then, you know, they don't have to come to a third meeting for a decision.
Do you, do you mind us coming before the, the next meeting? So we can schedule, where Nate can schedule a site walk with us to be there.
I mean, keep in mind that I'm going to be moving this.
Right.
Yeah.
Of the wetlands.
Document, document as much as possible, yeah.
That's where.
That's great, so, yeah, we will work this all out.
And you'll notify me so I can make sure the dogs are away.
Okay.
Yeah, because you can see it right from the, you can see it right from the road.
You can see it from the road.
So, so as not to have any issues with the site visit, because I know last time there was miscommunication there. Um, so it would, I would be the one scheduling it because I can communicate with them on air. Um, we can do whatever you want, we can have them park and just walk the right away, they don't have to go through the entirety of your property if you don't wish.
They can see it right from the road, it's, it's, it's right there, so I can meet them down by my, my dad's.
So, so we can schedule it to, everyone can kind of park on that road, and I'll, I'll, I'll remind everyone right out in front.
Okay.
Just to be clear, so as we're not all like congregating at, on the other part of the site.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll just, so I'll, do you want me to schedule Paul with you or, or?
Well, let me start digging it up and then we'll go from there.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then you just want notification, like even if we're just looking at the road, do you want notification regarding the dogs or the dogs, okay? Okay.
They started fishing across the street and, yeah.
All right.
He let me know that there was somebody out.
All right, they're doing their job.
For so long, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Hey, next is staff report, enforcement report update.
Uh, sorry, I'm just taking notes on this for a second. Uh, staff report. For the staff report, um, enforcement. Um, next week is going to be the hearing for the ordinance updates, uh, for council, so council's going to, uh, had scheduled a public hearing for next Monday. If any of you are interested in attending virtually or in person, that'll be for, um, for adding the ordinance, I mean, the, um, the citation part to the ordinance, so that would be that hundred dollars a day, um, up to a thousand dollars for violations, as well as changing the composition of the commission to, only to have five regular members, three alternates, um, so that would need a quorum of three people. Um, so if you're interested, next week, six thirty, Monday, um, and if you go online, you can find, like, if you go to the city council website, you can find their Zoom link on the agenda, kind of like on our agenda. Six thirty, yeah. Not sure quite when we'll be on the agenda, but I'll be there to defend it.
Okay, that's the fifteen.
Yep. And, uh, the other, I guess as far as enforcement goes, um, two four oh, or two nine oh four Winston Road, that was the property that we were discussing during the last meeting, the show of cause. Uh, the property owner, Dan Fergal, got in touch with me, he was on vacation, um, as, as, as an aside, it's just, it's frustrating that, the way that state statute reads, I have to send it no, er, no, er, no later than three days and no more than ten days. So, usually people get this, once the certified mail goes out and they finally pick it up, like the day before. So it's a little frustrating, but whatever, so he, he wished he could come. Um, he was totally willing to be cooperative, he put up silt fencing around the area where his material pile is, uh, you know, moving into the wetland behind, so he's making some good faith effort to get the sediment under control, though it's not entirely working, um, on the site. Uh, and then we have a meeting with him and his engineer, I believe it's Bill Colby, um, to kind of instruct them on how to put together, like, what we would want, which is you had requested a full site plan, just to understand what's there now, what they still need to do, where we're at, not just that little part of the site. Um, unfortunately, our office is doing a digitization of all of our records, and we don't have their file. So I would have done this earlier, but I have to keep on punting it out because we're not receiving our, uh, digitized files back. Um, but once I have that full thick file, we can have that meeting and, and, and get to next steps for resolution. Um, the last thing, there's going to be an application coming in for, uh, for May. Um, that's going to be for nine one nine Girdat Road, um, for a large clearing that we noticed for a view. Um, that landowner has been very cooperative, nice guy, um, you know, he's installed sediment and erosion control to try to like, get it in check prior to applying to the commission for a restorate, to do restoration. Um, I spoke to his, he retained a consultant, um, per my request, Ian Cole, if you're familiar with that name, he's, he's done other wetlands work. Um, and he went over kind of a basic plan, which would involve a lot of, um, kind of pollinator meadow in the upland review area and some restoration. Uh, it's not as much wetlands cleared as I originally thought, which is a good thing, so, uh, anyway, that'll be coming in May. Um, they're expected to have it by the deadline. Uh, and that's, that's all I have for as far as the enforcement report. And, and, uh, a- as far as the staff report, since we're still on that, no agent determinations.
Second.
Second.
One favor. Here first and then out, result, I'll call it off, Christine.
Hi.
Adrian.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Randall.
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
A motion carries.
I'm eventually putting in an application too.